The nearest exits are at the North and South Rostrum. For occupants at the first floor and front rows of the VIP gallery, the North, South, and main entrance exits are available. For occupants at the VIP gallery, the main entrance and North and South VIP exits are available. For occupants at the second-floor gallery, there are exits available at both sides. For occupants at the third-floor gallery, there are available exits at the East and West sides. In case of emergency, this is the plenary hall exit plan. For guests situated at the Rostrum, the nearest exits are at the North and South Rostrum. For occupants at the first floor and front rows of the VIP gallery, the North, South, and main entrance exits are available. For occupants at the VIP gallery, the main entrance and North and South VIP exits are available. For occupants at the second-floor gallery, there are exits available at both sides. For occupants at the third-floor gallery, there are available exits at the East and West sides.
Session resume. Mayang Hapon, Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I move to proceed with the refer-- ah, sorry. Mr. Speaker, I move to defer the reading and approval of the journals of the previous session.
There's a motion to defer the reading of the journal or the minutes of the session. Any objection? The chair here is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I now move to proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports.
Councilor Lamart, is there any objection? The chair here is none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of bills, resolutions, and first reading as well as communications and committee reports for referral for the appropriate committee. Secretary General.
Additional reference of business: Bills on first reading. House Bill 4193 amending the Act providing for the establishment of congressional, city, and municipal libraries and barangay reading centers throughout the Philippines by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 4194, mandating the formulation and institutionalization of a comprehensive infrastructure development master plan by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 4195, institutionalizing a master plan for Metro Manila flood management by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Metro Manila Development.
House Bill 4196, authorizing Ikomelec to use an automated election system in the conduct of barangay and SK elections by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 4197, further amending the Philippine Teachers Professionalization Act of 1994 by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 4198, mandating food manufacturers to display color-coded nutritional information on food packaging by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 4199, institutionalizing a national telemedicine system in the Philippines by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 4200, providing for the strategic exploration, development, utilization, and conservation of mineral resources for the benefit of local industries and communities by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 4201, providing a fuel subsidy for municipal fisheries by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill 4202, defining and penalizing espionage and other offenses against national security by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 4203, providing for a manakarta for workers in the informal economy by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 4204, providing for the issuance of a list of low-lying areas in the Philippine territory vulnerable to rising sea levels as a result of climate change and areas at highest for natural disasters by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Climate Change.
House Bill 4205, integrating voter education in the junior and senior high school curricula by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 4206, integrating labor education in the senior high school curriculum by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill numbers 4207, 4208, 4209, 4210, and 4211 declaring certain dates of every year a special non-working holiday in several municipalities in the province of Bukidnon in commemoration of its Municipal Charter Day anniversary by Representative Alba.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 4212, declaring March 19 of every year a special non-working holiday in Talakag, Bukidnon in commemoration of its Foundation Day anniversary.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 4213, strengthening the Department of National Defense proper by Representatives Malapitan Romulo, Gutierrez, Odukado, and Bautista Johann Munich.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill 4214, penalizing foreign interference in the Philippines and creating the counter-foreign interference task force by Representatives Malapitan Romulo, Gutierrez, Odukado, and Bautista Johann Munich.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill 4215, providing for the charter of the Office of the Vice President of the Republic of the Philippines by Representative Makapagal Arroyo.
To the Committee on Government Reorganization.
House Bill 4216, upgrading the service capacity of the Hospital ng Paranyake I in Paranyake City from a first level to second-level community hospital by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 4217, institutionalizing the Negosio Center Business Counselors under the DTI by Representative Hernandez Ramil.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 4218, establishing the Summer Island Region by Representatives Libanan, Gonzalez, Christopher Shin, Tan Stephen James, Tan Reynolds, Michael Daza, and Ong Chuan.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 4219, declaring Kakao Development as a priority program for Bicol Regional Economic Development, establishing the Bicol Kakao Development Program Office under the DA Regional Field Office V by Representatives Elseda.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 4220, establishing a food security index at the provincial and municipal levels and mandating its use for policymaking including ridge-setting program, targeting, and budget prioritization by Representatives Elseda.
To the Committee on Food Security.
House Bill 4221, renaming the Maoraro National High School in Maoraro, Ginobatan Albay into Ginobatan National High School by Representatives Elseda.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 4222, establishing a manakarta for barangay nutrition scholars by Representatives Elseda.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 4223, establishing a manakarta for barangay tanods, barangay police officers, or barangay peacekeeping and security officers by Representatives Elseda.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 4224, declaring October 16 of every year a National Food Security Day by Representatives Elseda.
To the Special Committee on Food Security.
House Bill 4225, institutionalizing a national suicide prevention and mental health crisis hotline by Representatives Elseda.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 4226, providing opportunities for returning OFW nurses to train local nurses by Representatives Elseda.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill 4227, establishing virtual assistance support facilities in key provinces and cities by Representatives Elseda.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 422E, establishing the Tesda Albay Polytechnic Institute in Pulangim Community College Albay by Representatives Elseda.
To the Committee on Hire and Technical Education.
House Bill numbers 4229 and 4230 declaring Romblon Romblon a tourism destination and as the marble capital of the Philippines by Representative Madrona.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 4231, to recruit, hire, and train additional school-based guidance counselors, psychologists, school social workers, and mental health personnel by Representative Lakson.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 4232, converting the Maasin Learning Center in Maasin, Samwangga City into the Maasin Integrated School by Representative Chuwatai.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 4233, establishing a national program for post-harvest, cold-chain, and logistics infrastructure to strengthen food security by Representatives Elseda.
To the Special Committee on Food Security.
House Bill 4234, providing for the revised warehouse receipts law of the Philippines by Representatives Elseda.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 4235, relaxing bank secrecy laws for elected and appointed government officials by Representatives Elseda.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Bill 4236, ensuring the continuous availability of essential medicines, vaccines, and supplies for notifiable infectious diseases of public health importance in all rural health units by Representatives Elseda.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 4237, establishing the irrigation for food security program by Representatives Elseda.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 4238, promoting research, development, and innovation for food security, establishing a food security innovation and research program by Representatives Elseda.
To the Special Committee on Food Security.
House Bill 4239, providing for manakarta for physical therapists by Representatives Elseda.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 4240, renaming the National Food Authority Council into the National Food Security Council by Representatives Elseda.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 4241, providing for national anti-doping policy in sports by Representative Gomez.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 4242, strengthening the Philippine Road Safety Action Plan for 2023 to 2028 by establishing animal shelters in each city or municipality by Representatives Chuwatai.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 4243, strengthening the National Greening Program and the Forest Protection Program by Representatives Chuwatai.
To the Special Committee on Forestation.
House Bill 4244, providing affordable housing programs for public school teachers by Representatives Chuwatai.
To the Committee on Housing and Urban Development.
House Bill 4245, strengthening and revitalizing the banana industry in the Philippines by Representative Mendoza.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 4246, an act establishing the Refugees and Stateless Persons Protection Office, providing for the refugee and stateless person status determination procedure, setting forth the obligations, rights, and treatment of recognized refugees and stateless persons and for other purposes by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 4247, an act providing for early voting by qualified senior citizens, persons with disabilities, lawyers, and human resources for health in national and local elections by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 4248, an act providing education pathways for basic education students and appropriating funds therefore by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 4249, an act converting the extension campus of the Eastern Summer State University in the municipality of Artetia, Province of Eastern Summer into a regular campus and appropriating funds therefore by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Hire and Technical Education.
House Bill 4250, an act establishing a regular campus of the Eastern Summer State University in the municipality of Balangiga, Province of Eastern Summer and appropriating funds therefore by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Hire and Technical Education.
House Bill 4251, an act expanding the use of legal assistance fund for the Agarang Kalinga at Saklolo para sa mga OFWs na nangangailangan action fund, amending for the purpose Section 26 of RA Number 8042, otherwise known as the Migrant Workers and Overseas Filipinos Act of 1995 as amended, and Section 14 of RA 11641, otherwise known as the Department of migrant Workers Act by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill 4252, an act to encourage good Samaritans who provide reasonable assistance in an emergency by protecting them from liability by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on People's Participation.
House Bill 4253, liberalizing the lease of lands by foreign investors, establishing the stability of long-term lease contracts by Representatives Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 4254, amending Article 174, Paragraph 1 of the Family Code and Article 364 of the Civil Code of the Philippines by Representatives Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 4255, providing for a 10% discount to military and uniformed personnel by Representatives Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security and the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 4256, to institute the National Commission on the Family and for Other Purposes by Representatives Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 4257, an act strengthening the procedure for registration of voters and adopting a system of online registration, amending for the purpose Sections 2, 3, 8, 9, 10, 12, 13, 22, 23, 24, 29, 32, 33, and 45, of RA Number 8189, otherwise known as the Voters Registration Act of 1996 by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 4258, mandating the inclusion of a personal financial literacy course in the technical vocational education and training curriculum of Technical Vocational Institutions and Technical Education and Skills Development Authority Training Centers by Representatives Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Hire and Technical Education.
House Bill 4259, an act to accelerate the discovery and development of innovative medicines by strengthening clinical trials and for other purposes by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 4260, an act institutionalizing the Philippine Abaka Industry Development Program, providing funds therefore and for other purposes by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 4261, establishing the Philippine Entrepreneurs Academy and appropriating funds therefore by Representatives Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Hire and Technical Education.
House Bill 4262, an act institutionalizing the Philippine Fiber Industry Development Program, providing funds therefore and for other purposes by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 4263, an act promoting Philippine indigenous and traditional writing systems and providing further protection, preservation, and conservation by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 4264, an act regulating the registration, licensure, and practice of physical therapy and appropriating funds therefore by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 4265, establishing the public schools of the future in technology by Representatives Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 4266, redefining the crime of illegal recruitment committed by a syndicate by Representatives Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill 4267, an act providing for the revised government auditing code of the Philippines by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 4268, an act protecting the rights of internally displaced persons and penalizing the acts of arbitrary internal displacement by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Human Rights.
House Bill 4269, an act upgrading the Sogod District Hospital in the municipality of Sogod, Province of Southern Lede, into a Level 2 general hospital to be known as the Sogod General Hospital, increasing its bed capacity, upgrading its professional healthcare services and facilities, authorizing the increase of its medical personnel, and appropriating funds therefore by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 4270, establishing a voucher system for poor and academically qualified students of private higher education institutions and private technical vocational institutions by Representatives Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Hire and Technical Education.
House Bill 4271, an act institutionalizing active transport by establishing a safe pathways network of bicycle lanes, walkways, and slow streets by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Transportation and Committee on Sustainable Development Goals.
House Bill 4272, an act regulating the use of treatment technology for municipal and hazardous wastes, repealing for the purpose Section 20 of RA Number 8749 entitled the Philippine Clean Air Act of 1999 by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Ecology and Committee on Energy.
House Bill 4273, an act establishing the Young Farmers and Fisher Folk Challenge Program, creating for the purpose the Young Farmers and Fisher Folk Challenge Council and appropriating funds therefore by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yada Marie, Romualdes Andrew Julian, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 4274, institutionalizing the implementation of fuel subsidy for PUV tricycle and full-time ride hailing and delivery services drivers nationwide by Representative Bautista Lim.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 4275, strengthening mechanisms against school bullying by Representative Bautista Lim.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 4276, mandating PhilHealth to provide free 2D echocardiography procedure for infants diagnosed with Down Syndrome by Representative Atide.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 4277, strengthening the mandate, capabilities, and organizational structure of the MTRCB by Representative Padiernos.
To the Committee on Public Information.
House Bill 4278, modernizing the Philippine Civil Registration and Vital Statistics System by Representative Padiernos.
To the Committee on Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 4279, strengthening the legal staff of the DOJ, renaming it as the Office of the Chief State Counsel by Representative Padiernos.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 4280, establishing an agriculture information system in all cities and municipalities by Representative Briones.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 4281, providing for the comprehensive management of hazardous waste by Representative Amentado.
To the Committee on Ecology.
House Bill 4282, establishing a nationwide program providing free maintenance medicines and vitamin supplements to senior citizens through public health facilities and accredited partner pharmacies by Representative Carey.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 4283, declaring September 5 of every year a special non-working holiday in Basista Pangasinan in commemoration of its founding anniversary by Representative Kohwangko Mark.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 4284, mandating the permanent appointment of provincial, city, municipal environment, and natural resources officer by Representative Alba.
To the Committee on Local Government.
Resolutions, House Resolution 204, directing the appropriate House committee to conduct an inquiry on the rising death and active cases of leptospirosis disease in national and local public hospitals in the country by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 205, congratulating Alex Ayala for being the first Filipino to win a Grand Slam singles main draw match in the open era by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 206, congratulating and commending Filipina chess player Janelle Mae Freina for her historic triumph at the 31st Abu Dhabi International Chess Festival by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 207, congratulating and commending Kira Ellis for winning the gold medal in the 2025 Europe Triathlon Junior Cup in Riga, Latvia by Representative Copilar.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 208, directing the appropriate committees to conduct an investigation on the current government flood control projects and the worsening flooding in the country by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 209, Strongly Urging the NAPLCOM to Immediately Effect the Conversion, Reorganization, and/or Upgrading as May Be Appropriate of the Caloocan City Police Station into a Full-Fledged Police District by Representatives Malapitan and Asistio.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Resolution 210, Expressing the Profound Condolences of the House on the Passing of Mrs. Trudy Araneta Rojas, Esteemed Matriarch of the Araneta Rojas Family and Mother of Former Senator Mar Rojas by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 211, Directing the Committee on Energy to Conduct an Inquiry on Issues of Sufficiency, Reliability, and Affordability of Electricity in the Province of Palawan by Representative Salvamé.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 212, Recognizing Aleat Chocolates as a Rising Filipino Brand and the Key Cacao Processor of the Bicol Region and Expressing the Support of the House for the Development of Bicol as the Country's Premium Cacao and Chocolate Hub by Representative Salceda.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Resolution 213, Urging the PSA to Recognize Virtual Assistants, Online Freelancers, and Remote Workers as a distinct labor category within the Philippine Statistical System and to Include them in the Generation and Publication of Official Labor Market Statistics by Representative Salceda.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Resolution 214, Urging the DA, the National Nutrition Council, and other Concerned Agencies to Commemorate October 16, 2025 as National Food Security Day in Consonance with World Food Day by Representative Salceda.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Resolution 215, Urging the Civil Service Commission to Fully Implement the Sanguniang Kabataan Reform Act of 2015 as Amended, Granting Civil Service Eligibility to Qualified Sanguniang Kabataan Officials by Representative Salceda.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Resolution 216, Directing the Congressional Infrastructure Committee to Include in the Ongoing Investigation all DPWH Flood Control Projects in Las Penas from 2022 to 2025 by Representative Santos Marc Anthony.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 217, Commending and Congratulating the PNP Drug Enforcement Group, Zambuanga City, Pideya Regional Office 9, Regional Drug Enforcement Unit 9, Police Station 11, Zambuanga City, Second Seaborne Mobile Force Company of the PNP Maritime Group, and the Regional Mobile Force Battalion 9 of Region 9, Zambuanga Peninsula, for their exemplary performance in successful anti-illegal drug operations by Representative Chua Tai.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Resolution 218, Commending and Congratulating Women Grandmaster Janelle Mae Freina for being the first Filipina to be crowned Champion of the 31st Abu Dhabi International Chess Festival by Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 219, Urging the DTI to Remove the Purchase Booklet as a Requirement for the Abailment of the 5% Special Discount of Senior Citizens on Basic Necessities and Prime Commodities by Representative Ordannis.
To the Committee on Senior Citizens.
House Resolution 220, Congratulating the Filipino Competitors who brought honor to the country by winning gold medals in the 14th World Skills Assay and Competition held in Manila on August 26 to 28, 2025 by Representative De Venesia.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 221, Directing the Appropriate Committee to Conduct an Inquiry into the Skills Matching and Forecasting Policies, Ensuring Quality Employment and Job Security for Filipinos by Representative Benitez Alfredo.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message from the President, Line Item Veto Message of the President on House Bill Number 10535, Amending Sections 134 and 168 of the National Internal Revenue Code of 1997 as amended.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communications, Various Communications Submitted to the House of Representatives by LGU officials Relative to their Posting and Reporting Requirements of the Fund Utilization and Status of Program Project Implementation of the Local Government Support Fund as Attested by their respective local Chief Executives.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated August 29, 2025 of the Executive Secretary, Office of the President, Malakanyang, Transmitting Two Original Copies of RA Number 12235 titled Amending Sections 134 and 168 of Republic Act Number 8424, Otherwise Known as the National Internal Revenue Code of 1997 as amended, which was signed by President Ferdinand Romualdes Marcos Jr. together with his line item veto message.
To the Archives.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to recognize-
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to recognize the guests of Representative Julius Caesar J. Vergara, Representative of the 3rd District of Nueva Isihah, Former Mayor of Bungabo, Nueva Isihah, Mr. Alan Gamilia, Barangay Captain Crisanto Carlos, Mr. Edwin Kahukom, Attorney Anil Texon, Mr. Isidro Velasco, Attorney Caesar Villiar, Mr. Michael Pesa, Mr. Bong De Castro.
To the guests of Congressman Julius Caesar J. Vergara, 3rd District of Nueva Isihah. Welcome to the House on behalf of Speaker Martin Romaldes, Chancellor. Welcome to the House, welcome to the House of Representatives. Good afternoon. Majority Leader, please.
Mr. Speaker, I would also like to recognize the guests of the Honorable Roy Gonzalez, Representative of the Lone District of the City of Santa Rosa Laguna, namely the barangay captains of Santa Rosa Laguna, Mr. Ian Arambolo de Guzman of Barangay Labas, Mr. Edison Itau Caravana of Barangay Tagapo, Mr. Edwin Servo of Barangay Kaingin, Mr. Raymond Fortunado of Barangay Dila, Mr. Alvin Ramos Cartano of Barangay Puok, Mr. Adoracion Baby Ong Iko of Barangay Makabling, Mr. Michael Ambata of Barangay Market Area, Mr. Ladislao Alikbusan of Barangay Sinalhan, Mr. Marcelo Tangonan of Barangay, former barangay captain, and former barangay captain Nilo Basuan and Mr. Joel Castro.
To the barangay leaders of the guests of the Lone District, the City of Santa Rosa Laguna, of Congressman Roy M. Gonzalez. On behalf of Speaker Martin Romaldes, welcome to the House of Representatives. Magandang hapon po. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I would also like to recognize the guests of the Honorable Dimzar Salih, Representative of the Lone District of Tawi-Tawi, namely Nurkan Hamsuri, Aldwin Dan Lee Solis, Fahad Mustafa, Sharif Sahali, Abdulamin Mansul, Abu Bakar Sadhari.
To the guests of the Lone District of Tawi-Tawi, Honorable Dimzar M. Salih, welcome to the House of Representatives. Okran. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the guests of Congressman Javier Miguel Lopez Benitez, 3rd District, Negros Occidental, Climate-Impacted and Vulnerable Communities, Greenpeace Philippines, Virginia Benosa, Liorin, Jeff Chua, Yuneel Santos, Obri Almarines, Carl Darwin Legaspi, Jamen Amihan, Aksyon Klima, John Leo Algo, Eastern Summer Youth for Climate Justice, Salcedo Eastern Summer, Tony Abletes, Barangay Tumana, Marikina City Typhoon Ondoy Survivors, Justin Soldevilla, Boy Panaligan, Alteya Biankakuya, Ryan Rafe, National Anti-Pa poverty Commission Basic Sectoral Council Members, Joseph Aquino, Head of the Delegation, Bong Guro, Malu Olanga, Doc, Gianna Glenn Manalaisai, Menandro Nedik, Ferdinand Escotón, Paulino Doma, Joey Gamayan, Chinito Ril Casicas, Serena Quiamco, Gemrel Marcelino, Art Letim, Ana Espinas, Nessi Nequita, and the staff from 3rd District of Negros Occidental, Boni Rose Dahai, Benjamin Villa, Vicky Casiple, Ruena Mosqueda, and Aliana Montepio.
To the guests of 3rd District Negros Occidental, Representative Javier Miguel El Benitez, welcome to the House of Representatives. Magandang hapon. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I would also like to recognize the guests of the Honorable Dinatan Watko III, Representative of the 2nd District of the Province of Rizal, Municipal Coordinators Diana Palmares, Maria Concepcion Campo, Reline Gale Pasay, Aleli Capistrano, Cesar Asunsion, Joseph Javier Jaime Soriaño, Reyna Shenna de Guzman, Noelito Mederal, Gilbert Katambay, Mary Jane Gerhen, Mylene Gutlay, Mary Jane Ocampo de Paz, and Ms. Perlita Jimenez.
To the municipal coordinators of the 2nd District of the Province of Rizal, to their Congressman, Emigio Pitan Watko III. On behalf of Speaker Martin Romaldes, welcome to the House of Representatives. Magandang hapon.
Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, today being a Wednesday, Mr. Speaker, with leave of the House, I would like to move to open the privilege arc.
There's a motion to open. Any objection? Chair, here is none. Please proceed. Motion is granted.
Mr. Speaker, I move to recognize the gentleman from the 3rd District of Negros Occidental, Representative Javier Benitez.
Representative Javier Miguel El Benitez, 3rd District of Negros Occidental. You have the floor, sir. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues, I am here as a representative of the 3rd District of Negros Occidental and as a Filipino deeply concerned about the future we are creating for the next generation of Filipinos. In Negros Occidental, as in many provinces around the Philippines, we are witnessing the harsh realities of climate change firsthand. Extreme weather events have battered our towns and cities repeatedly. Prolonged droughts and erratic weather patterns are devastating our salt production and sugarcane yields, impacting the livelihoods of countless families who have depended on these industries for generations. Mr. Speaker, these are not just abstract economic statistics. These are real losses, real damages that are eroding the very foundation of our communities. Over the weekend, we experienced a phenomenon. Five days' worth of rainfall fell in just one hour, a hyper-localized rainfall primarily affecting Quezon City and Marikina City. In that short time, these areas received a staggering 121 millimeters of rain, surpassing the previous record for the highest rainfall in one hour during Typhoon Ondoy, which was 90 millimeters. In certain areas, traffic came to a standstill as cars became trapped in the floodwaters, with some even seen floating away. Although there was no tropical depression, the Quezon City government reported that flooding affected 36 out of 142 barangays, prompting some families to evacuate. In my home province, in Negros Occidental alone, 16 evacuation centers in two towns and two cities affecting 21 barangays are currently providing temporary shelter to 854 families or 3,738 individuals. That is, as of 10 a.m. of September 2, 2025, according to the Provincial Social Welfare Development Office. These individuals are affected by the relentless downpour and floodwater brought by LPA and further intensified by the habagat. Many people, including the local government units, or LGUs, were caught off guard by the recent situation. However, was this anticipated? Yes, in an interview by Dr. Alfredo Maharlagmay of the UP Resilience Institute, identified climate change as a likely contributor to the increasing intensity of weather events, such as the one we experienced last weekend. And as we all know, the Philippines is grappling with a major corruption scandal involving flood control projects. Allegations of substandard work, incomplete projects, and outright ghost projects have sparked public outrage and the ire of no less than the president, who has vowed accountability and launched investigations, while Congress has revealed that a small number of contractors have cornered a massive portion of the flood control budget, raising serious concerns about kickbacks and systemic corruption. Mr. Speaker, I welcome President Marcos's order to investigate the 350 billion in flood control projects and with like-minded colleagues, demand all concerned agencies full disclosure of all project details, including names of contractors and politicians responsible for these multi-billion peso projects funded by our taxpayers. I have personally signed the call for transparency initiated by several chief executives as I strongly believe in good governance, transparency, and accountability. And while I fully support the investigation into the corruption associated with flood control projects, I urge this honorable body to consider broader issues. UP Resilience Institute Executive Director Alfredo Maharlagmay has cautioned that our massive allocations for flood control may be misplaced. He stresses that a more prudent approach is to begin with rigorous area-specific studies, understanding the causes of flooding in each locality first before building costly infrastructure. Otherwise, we risk spending hundreds of billions without solving the problem. In fact, while annual losses from natural hazard impacts average around 50 billion pesos, we are set to pour 275 billion into flood control projects in 2026. A more sustainable path would be to cover these verified losses and redirect the rest toward interventions with proven long-term impact. For decades, we have invested resources in essential relief and recovery efforts as well as in repairing infrastructure after extreme weather events like typhoons. However, we must ask ourselves, is this approach sustainable? Is it sufficient? According to the Philippine Department of Finance, extreme weather and climate change impacts have cost the Philippines at least 506 billion pesos, or 8.9 million dollars, in damages during the 2010s. The World Bank also reported that the country stands to lose upwards of 13.4% of its GDP by 2040 if no concrete action on climate change is taken. With the public funding currently available for disasters, 97.2% goes to adaptation. It can be argued that the current budget is not enough and the methods for budget allocation are not sustainable. Intense winds, flooding, and droughts will continue to greatly impact our communities and multiple sources, including NASA, are telling us that extreme weather events are becoming more frequent, longer-lasting, and more severe. Every time a barangay is washed away, every time crops are damaged or livestock drowns, every lost income of a daily wage earner who could not report to work because of an extreme weather event, it is the communities themselves that pay, or their LGUs, or the national government, funded by their own and our own tax money. According to science, extreme weather is only going to get worse. So how can we make these resiliency measures sustainable? How can we prepare our national and local budget for these challenges? It is clear that we cannot rely solely on adaptation and resilience. We need- It is clear that we cannot rely solely on adaptation and resilience. We need a paradigm shift. But we need to ask, Mr. Speaker, who is truly the most responsible for escalating this crisis? Science has an answer for that, too. Giant oil and gas corporations, known collectively as carbon majors, who have been knowingly contributing to climate change while downplaying its impact. A comprehensive database of carbon majors linked the cumulative historical emissions of 180 of these industrial producers from 1854 through the end of 2023 to account for 69% of emissions which are causing the planet to heat up. While communities reel from storms and floods, these heavy-emitting corporations continue to rake in billions of dollars. In 2024 alone, just five of the world's largest and most polluting investor-owned fossil fuel companies made 104 billion in profits. These profits were made at the expense of our people, our environment, and our future. Corruption in flood control projects in the decades of environmental destruction by fossil fuel companies are not separate problems, but interconnected injustices that cause the suffering of Filipinos. Stolen public funds leave our communities exposed to floods, while fossil fuel corporations continue to profit as the climate crisis worsens. Mr. Speaker, we are not without constitutional basis. Our own constitution enshrines this duty. Article 2, Section 16 declares that "the state shall protect and advance the right of the people to a balance and healthy ecological in accord with the rhythm and harmony of nature." This provision is not aspirational. It is a mandate. It compels us as representatives of our people to ensure that both government and institutions and powerful private actors are held accountable when their actions undermine this constitutional right. Embedding this principle in our legislative response ensures that our fight against corruption and climate inaction is not just a political choice, but a constitutional obligation. As a representative of my district, a former local official, I stand with the Filipino people in demanding truth, accountability, and justice regarding corruption, flood control, and other infrastructure projects, including reported collusion between officials and contractors. The Philippines contributes less than 0.5% of global greenhouse gas emissions, yet we suffer disproportionately from its consequences. We're asking our communities to innovate, to remain resilient. Article 2, Sections 15 and 19 of our constitution further provides that "the state shall protect and promote the right to health of the people, and it must promote a just and dynamic social order and improve the quality of life for all." Climate justice is therefore social justice. It is our duty to ensure that the poorest and most vulnerable who suffer the greatest losses while contributing the least to the crisis are not left behind. I believe our communities are long past that breaking point and need relief in the form of loss and damage finance. It's time to make carbon majors and hold those responsible accountable and make them pay their climate debt. Mr. Speaker, the challenges I have raised today, the devastation brought by recurring typhoons, the widening vulnerability of our coastal and agriculture communities, and the institutional gaps that continue to hinder effective disaster-risk governance underscore a sobering reality. Our country remains among the most climate and disaster-vulnerable nations in the world. It is in this context that I, together with esteemed colleagues, have filed House Bill 2577, establishing the University of Philippines National Climate Resilience Institute, or UPNCRI. This measure seeks to transform the existing UP Resilience Institute with NOAA as its core component into a permanent national institution directly funded and mandated to serve as the country's scientific hub for disaster risk reduction and climate adaptation. By institutionalizing UPNCRI, we are ensuring that resilience is no longer treated as an afterthought, but as a central pillar of national development and human security. This is a step moving our country from a cycle of vulnerability to one of preparedness, foresight, and adaptive strength. The creation of the UPNCRI is not simply an academic exercise. It is an urgent response to the real experiences of millions of Filipinos who year after year rebuild their lives from ground up. Mr. Speaker, I am speaking before this august chamber to lend my voice to those most impacted by the climate crisis, the marginalized, the young, the overburdened, and to call out those that contribute most to this burden. Passing a law will not magically fix the outsized challenge of climate change, but it will help in easing the suffering of millions. Just as fighting corruption now will not ensure it, will be stamped out for all time, stamped out for all time. But greed in all forms is our enemy. It is our duty to fight it. It is high time we ensure that those who have profited from the destruction of our climate are held accountable. And as legislators, I urge all of you to support the passage of the Climate Accountability Act, or the CLIMA Act. This measure recognizes that protecting the climate system is not only an environmental concern, but a constitutional mandate, a human rights obligation, and a duty for future generations. CLIMA establishes enforceable mechanisms for holding polluters accountable, compels carbon majors to contribute that fair share, and provides vulnerable communities with access to redress, reparations, and resilience resources. In doing so, it ensures that our fight against climate change is not just aspirational, but legally grounded, transparent, and just. We also ensure that science is used as the basis for all climate change adaptation and disaster prevention projects that are funded by Congress. So I call on this Congress to make the 20th Congress a Congress for climate justice, a courageous Congress that will call for accountability, a just Congress that will stand to protect the rights of our people to a safe and healthy environment and ensure a livable future for my generation and the generations to come. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Tamong salamat, Congressman Benitez. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer the speech of the Honorable Javier Benitez to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action.
There's a motion to refer the speech of Congressman Benitez to the said committee. Any objection? Hearing none. Said speech is hereby approved and referred. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member who is available, privilege hour, I move to close the privilege hour.
There's a motion to close the privilege hour. Chair hears none. Any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other business for the day, I move to adjourn session until Monday, September 8 at 3 p.m. in the afternoon.
Motion to adjourn is approved till September 8, 2025, Monday.